All righty, hello everyone. I'll just wait to see if we can start the live stream and then we'll get started. Okay. Hello everyone. My name is Anthony Bowles. I'm the acting development planning manager in the Planning and Regulatory Services branch. I'm the manager for the development assessment and development compliance teams. Before we begin today, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today and pay my respects to the elders, past, present and emerging. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. I'd also like to acknowledge the mayor Theresa Harding and the councillors who have joined us today. Councillor Kate Consil is unfortunately an apology for this evening due to an unavoidable prior commitment. A few housekeeping matters first. The toilets are out the door to the left here and to the left. In the event of emergency, the fire exits are also out to the left and out through the back to the car park. Please keep in mind COVID social distancing and mask requirements throughout the session today. We also have some water available up here if you need a drink and some copies of the agenda up the front if you didn't get one on your way in. Now onto the main topic. The independent decision review panel has been convened to deliver an increase in transparency, community and customer confidence and accuracy in decision making. This is the fourth time we've had the panel, but only the second time we've had a public hearing. We had a public hearing back in August for the Oneless Landfill application. That was a successful event, very similar to the layout we have today. Very pleased to see the attendance today. This is excellent. This is exactly what we had in mind when we set up this process. It's great to see participation in the development assessment process. Might not be aware, but this isn't something that our local government areas do. It's unique to Ipswich. It is common in New South Wales, but it's unique to us. So normally you'd be familiar with the submission process, which is something you've all done. That's how you got here in the first place. But this process is something we've adopted to increase participation in controversial applications. The purpose of today's public hearing is for the applicant and the submitters to address our panel. So the independent decision review panel for this session is made up from three experts. Kate Isles, who is the chairperson and the town planner. Shelley McCormack, who is an economist. And Dale Clymer, who is a traffic engineer. Thank you all very much for being a part of the panel. So I will hand it over to Kate. I just will say that, keeping in mind that there is representatives from the applicant and also representatives from the community. So when we are communicating, please be mindful and be respectful. The process is intended to encourage discourse and to inform any independent panel. But respect is key in delivering that message. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Anthony. Good afternoon, Mayor, councillors, council team members, members of the Ipswich community and a warm welcome to those who are joining us online. As Anthony said, my name is Kate Isles. I'm a qualified town planner with over 20 years' experience across both public and the private sector. I've been asked by council to chair this independent decision review panel, dealing with this matter being 5636 2021 material change of use for a childcare centre at Arthur Somerville's Road, Cara Lee. It is also my responsibility to chair this afternoon's meeting. So as Anthony said, each panel is established with experts relevant to the development proposal to be decided. So in this, for this application, it does consist of myself as a town planner, Dale Clymer as a traffic engineer and Shelley McCormack as an economist. And I'll let them just introduce themselves very shortly.
Hi, my name's Shelley McCormack. I'm a director at Bull and Bear Economics and I have 15 years consulting experience assessing economic need both from the developer, assisting developers with the development applications, as well as undertaking peer reviews on behalf of councils for a range of land uses, including long day care centres.
Hello, my name's Dale Clymer. I'm a civil traffic engineer. I've got a a degree in master of science as well and also I'm a registered professional engineer in Queensland and also hold an accredited safety auditors certificate with the Queensland Department of Main Roads. My role at Virchells Engineering is principal engineer for traffic and transport and I've got over 40 years' experience in the profession. Thank you.
Thank you both. So as Anthony said, the decision review panel was introduced as part of council's adopted framework for development application and related activities, which was actually established back in 2019. The panel is called upon when certain applications meet specific criteria. And I thought it was important to understand in this particular circumstance, it's due to it being defined as a sensitive development matter. So that's due to application attracting more than 50 properly made submissions objecting to the application. So that's why the panel has been established. But further to that, the functions of the panel is in matters like these is also to facilitate this public hearing. This is the opportunity for the panel to hear openly from both the applicant and from the submitters who wish to discuss the matter with us. The panel have reviewed all of the material and documentation such as the applicant's application, responses to the information request, all of the submissions that have been received, the technical reports where relevant, and also the proposal plans. We've also reviewed the Ipswich City Council planning scheme and the scheme provisions applicable to the application. So this public hearing is structured and it does have a set agenda. We'll hear from both the applicant, first represented by their town planner Vu Nguyen, who will have 20 minutes for his presentation. We will then have the submitter presentation where we have four speakers, being Narita Atkinson, Kerry Anne Brown, Lachlan Brown representing Paul Brown and Brenda Valley. Each submitter will have up to 10 minutes. As chair, I will clink the glass when you have about two minutes left. As Anthony has also said, we are being livestreamed. We will ask for respect of all of the speakers. The panel may ask questions during any of the presentations. However, these questions would only be asked if it's required as a point of clarification or it's in the interest of the panel performing its functions accordingly in its review of this application. No other questions or comments will be taken as part of today's public hearing and we ask for cooperation in that respect. So I'd now like to invite Vu to make the applicant presentation. Thank you, Vu.
Thank you, Kate, for that introduction. My name is Vu Nguyen. I'm the director of Town Planning Alliance, who are the lead consultants for this development application. I'd also like to welcome in the room, we have also our consulting team. Joined with us today, Richard Quinn, the traffic engineer, Lachlan Stevenson, our civil engineer. We also have Ben Hyde, who's our acoustics air pollution amenity consultant, as well as our design team, Kelsey and Ben from Elevation Architects. As part of our application, we did also include an economic needs assessment from Location IQ. Sadly Gavin Dwayne, the practice principal could not attend today, being that he operates out of Sydney and lockdown is still well and truly in place. It's across the border. In terms of the project we have today, and I'll use this, oh, that's next one, there we go. Introducing the site, 54 to 55.
for development application and related activities, which was actually established back in 2019. The panel is called upon when certain applications meet specific criteria. And I thought it was important to understand in this particular circumstance, it's due to it being defined as a sensitive development matter. So that's due to application attracting more than 50 properly made submissions objecting to the application. So that's why the panel has been established. But further to that, the functions of the panel is, in matters like these, is also to facilitate this public hearing. This is the opportunity for the panel to hear openly from both the applicant and from the submitters who wish to discuss the matter with us. The panel have reviewed all of the material and documentation such as the applicant's application, responses to the information request, all of the submissions that have been received, the technical reports where relevant, and also the proposal plans. We've also reviewed the Ipswich City Council Planning Scheme and the scheme provisions applicable to the application. So this public hearing is structured and it does have a set agenda. We'll hear from both the applicant, first represented by their town planner Vu Nguyen, who will have 20 minutes for his presentation. We will then have the submitter presentation where we have four speakers, being Nerida Atkinson, Kerry Anne Brown, Lachlan Brown representing Paul Brown and Brenda Valali. Each submitter will have up to 10 minutes. As Chair, I will clink the glass when you have about two minutes left. As Anthony has also said, we are being livestreamed. We will ask for respect of all of the speakers. The panel may ask questions during any of the presentations. However, these questions would only be asked if it's required as a point of clarification or it's in the interest of the panel performing its functions accordingly in its review of this application. No other questions or comments will be taken as part of today's public hearing and we ask for cooperation in that respect. So I'd now like to invite Vu to make the applicant presentation, thank you Vu.
Thank you Kate for that introduction. My name is Vu Nguyen, I'm the Director of Town Planning Alliance, who are the lead consultants for this development application. I'd also like to welcome in the room, we have also our consulting team. Joined with us today, Richard Quinn, the traffic engineer, Lachlan Stevenson, our civil engineer. We also have Ben Hyde, who's our Acoustics, Air Pollution and Amenity Consultant, as well as our design team, Kelsey and Ben from Elevation Architects. As part of our application, we did also include an Economic Needs Assessment from Location IQ. Sadly Gavin Dwayne, the practice principal could not attend today, being that he operates out of Sydney and lockdown is still well and truly in place, it's across the border. In terms of the project we have today, and I'll use this, oh, that's, next one, there we go. Introducing the site 54 to 56 Arthur Somerville's Road at Cara Lee. In terms of the project itself, we have an operator who has signed up to operate from the centre once or if completed. That operator is Eden Academy, they are a national operator. And incidentally, Chris Seaker, who is the Director of Eden Academy, was a past student of Cara Lee State School. The developer themselves is our client Griffith Capital. They themselves are very experienced in this field as well. They operate, they develop a multitude of childcare centres throughout Queensland and retail centres as well. Now, the rest of the slide, as you'll see, is our consulting team that has participated in this project. I will add also that childcare centres, we get it, they're the hardest projects we as a consultant do, right? And that's why we went to the trouble of employing a full consulting team, because we normally have the usual gates, thresholds, hurdles that we have to address to ensure that the decision makers are satisfied that the proposal is appropriate. Typical things that are looked at are design, land use, traffic, acoustic and environmental in some instances. So again, I'm sure everyone in this room knows the location where we are. We do have a site that has three road frontages, Arthur Somerville's, Elaine and Lilian and directly opposite adjacent, if you will, to the Cara Lee State School. The site itself is a large lot residential zone. I promise I'll keep going Kate, I won't take up the whole 20 minutes, but I think it's important to provide some context to where we are. When we first lodged the application, we went in at a two-storey childcare centre. The site itself is quite unique in that it's not flat. It falls from west to east by some way. But following community objections, we have reduced that to a single-storey centre and I'll unpack the design shortly for you as well. So where we sit at the moment, we've gone from 116 placements down to 100 places in a centre that we're proposing. As a headline rate, our construction cost is circa $3.8 million. If you use the construction index to see what sort of job creation that looks like, when you apply nine to 10 jobs per million dollars, you're roughly around about 38 jobs created in the community off the back of the project during construction. Why do we apply for the application, why here? Our clients don't just jump in and think this will be a great idea. Obviously they need to profile the community, see if there's a need for what we're doing and indeed the planning scheme and the state legislation makes a heavy emphasis on making sure there is a need for what we're doing. That's where our consultant team, Location IQ, undertook a community need assessment or an economic need assessment, if you will. What we found was approximately 776 kids in the catchment as of 2021. And these are general numbers, an existing undersupply of between 46 to 72 centres. We have three other centres in the area and the need is projected to go as high as in the order of roughly 150 placements up at 2041. Now, numbers, when we do these things, only tell half the story. Our clients operate very good centres and that's not to say that other centres in the area do not. That is not what we're saying. But what we do do is focus heavily on providing user choice. User choice is important for our clients and for parents, because we don't all want to drive Falcons, some of us want to drive Holden's if you can get hold of them. So user choice is an important part of what we do here. In terms of the differentiation, the differentiation of what we want to achieve, it's, Eden Academy has developed a very strong portfolio of centres based on a high level of care, a high level of service and we intend to achieve the same here. Moving on, I'll just move on to the architectural side. I touched on before, the usual pinch points that we have to deal with, that the community need us to jump across whenever we do a childcare centre, is design, planning from a land use point of view, traffic and amenity. They're the same things every single time we do a childcare centre, whether it's in Mount Isa or Cara Lee or Gold Coast. So they're the things that we need to check before we even set foot through the doors of council. From a design point of view, noting that we are in a large lot residential zone, it serves us no benefit to come in here and plonk a large commercial appearing building within this, in this environment. What we have is a single-storey or now, single-storey centre. Heavy emphasis on domestic construction, lightweight materials, pitch roofs, gable roof forms. What we do have, and I'll just, I'll go forward to the end slide. As a floor plan, because the land falls heavily from west to east, the western part of the site is benched in, cut in. So if you see, I don't have a pointer on this thing, do we? Oh, there we go. That pedestrian entry point there is where it's on balance with the footpath. This portion over here is cut heavily into the ground. So we have a four metre buffer wrapping around to three metres at natural grade before we excavate that portion there. So as a result of that, what you'll find is that the gutter line of the centre, as it sits here, is roughly about the street level. As, because obviously it's a flat centre, when we come across here, the car park itself is filled, picture of seesaw as you will, and it's circa about one, one and a half metres above ground at that interface. The important thing, what we've done there is we've tried to avoid retaining walls there as well. So we're working toward batter system, heavy emphasis on landscaping and site cover. If I was to throw some figures at it, you're looking at circa 25% site cover for building footprint. In a large lot residential, that's where you want to be in our view. From a landscaping point of view, we've got about 20% in-ground deep planting, heavy emphasis on landscape buffering. So they're the things that drive the design itself, but I'll come back to the architectural. So they're the figures I've quoted to you there. Our site area is 3100, thereabouts, square metres in size, 100 children, down from 116. At the moment, it's obviously at 100 children, we're slated 17 employees, full-time equivalents. However, with any business, you'll have more people on your staff because you might run some casuals, rostering and whatnot, but 17 full-time equivalents. That generates a need for 30 car spaces, that is as per the planning scheme. And again, I note that when we did apply initially, we were seeking a non-standard parking rate. Based on the community commentary, we reworked our application and we now have a compliant parking rate. The parking rate required of the scheme is one space for every eight children plus one for every staff member. Lands you at 29 and a half to be exact, but you round up 30 spaces. The site coverage, building footprint, if I will, is what I spoke of before. It's roughly 25% of your site area. If you were to build a house here, the building code lets you go up to upwards of 50% of your building area. Recognising the large lot residential area we're in, we've kept it at 25%. Strong emphasis on landscaping, again circa 20% there. So from a design point of view, they're the things that we look at to make sure we meet our obligations under the planning scheme. From a planning point of view, and this is probably where it gets a bit boring, but we are in a large lot residential zone. The planning scheme itself, much like a lot of other schemes we work with, it has a preference or a desire or an allowance to provide community facilities in residential zones. Schemes want parents to be able to access care for the kids in their suburbs. They don't want us travelling three suburbs abroad to find, to find community care for our children. So the scheme does recognise that. It says though, if you want to put a childcare centre or, dare I say, a community facility in a large lot residential zone, it has a certain number of criteria that we need to meet in that sense. So that criteria being community need and that's why we went to the trouble of getting a economic consultant to demonstrate there was community need. It asks us also to co-locate where we can with other community facilities. It doesn't want multiple journeys to work. It wants mother, dad to drop Johnny and big sister off into one hit where we can in that sense. And that's why we felt the site was ideal. Breaking that down further, when you unpack the planning scheme itself, our view as a community use code, it does re-emphasise again the need to co-locate these sorts of uses with other community uses. Given the context we spoke of before being directly adjacent to the Cara Lee State School, we felt that met that objective. So from a planning point of view, that's why we felt there was merit in what we're doing. Moving on, I note there was heavy emphasis on traffic impacts when we went to public notification. There's no denying that there was a strong community interest in that element. What I've done is I've broken that commentary down into two parts. Traffic impacts or traffic assessment external to our site and shortly, traffic internal of our site. In terms of traffic access external to our site, touching on what we said before, what I said before, we have three frontages. We have Arthur Somerville's Road, that's identified as a major collector road. From a traffic engineering point of view, we don't like having driveways from major roads, full stop. At the other end of the spectrum, we have Lilian Street, which is a local road. And also from a traffic engineering point of view, we don't like having non-residential traffic through local roads, which leaves us with Elaine Street, which incidentally is identified as a minor collector road, which is where you want the access to be. So that's from an external point of view. I will note also that through the community commentary about the current parking demands and whatnot, one of the things we find with childcare is that unlike a school, our demand window for childcare is a lot broader. It's about two, two and a half hours of a morning when you're dropping Johnny off and it's about two, two and a half hours of an evening when you're picking Johnny up. It's distinctly different to a school where three o'clock pick-up is three o'clock pick-up. So we disperse that impact across a broader, longer timeframe than you'd normally see in a school. And that's the evidence that you see with childcare centres. What we've done here also is making sure we have a one driveway only to Elaine Street, so that we're trying to not slow down traffic, we're not trying to disrupt the traffic on Arthur Somerville's, which is the higher order road in that sense. Equally staying away from Lilian Street being the lowest order road. The work we've done, and I, Richard Quinn, our traffic engineer, has done a fair amount of work here, given the community interest. We've done traffic counts, traffic surveys, traffic modelling. And what it finds is that because our anticipated operations will peak outside of your school peaks, that we don't expect there to be any increase, significant increase on that external network based on the numbers that we have at the moment. For those of you who are interested, to throw some figures out there, you're looking at 40 arrivals and 40 departures in the morning peak and 35 arrivals and 35 departure trips in the afternoon peak. Traffic intersection analysis was also done and that confirmed that there would be no increased worsening of that intersection. Natural fact that intersection's operating under capacity at the moment. So if I move on to the traffic internal, and these are our obligations and this is why we've pushed to meet that, we have the compliant 30 car parking spaces now, that is through the reduction of the yield, the size of the building. We also have all our service vehicles entering and exiting the site in a forward gear. We don't want them reversing off-site from a safety point of view. And the rates applied within the goal, in the Ipswich planning scheme, we find are higher than other schemes throughout Queensland. But in this instance, we've complied with the rates set out in this scheme today. So on that basis, there should be no reliance on on-street parking. As I touched on before, servicing garbage truck, you see there, turns up on-site, picks up the rubbish, spins around, exit forward gear, no reversing onto the footpath. Moving on, the other impacts that we normally have to deal with when we're dealing with childcare centres is the amenity impact. And we've had a degree of interest about our waste collection and the odour that would arise from that. If I could just touch on that, we've done the noise logging and we've found that the childcare centre proposed, when benchmarked against the current background or ambient noise level, you're circa three decibels above the background noise level. And that's within allowable tolerances in our view. I won't, I'll have to summarise that in the statement, but that's essentially from a noise point of view. The design itself does include acoustic fencing along the perimeter to manage noise on the nearby residential properties. One of the things touched on was the amenity from the sewerage management. We don't have town sewerage here. Again, when we first proposed this prior to public notification, we were proposing to have the sewerage vacuumed out from the underground tank. Based on community concerns about odour and noise, we've gone and sourced a different product. We are now pumping the sewerage out, that's expected to be pumped out once a week. By pumping it with an air vent located at the property on the road frontage higher than surrounding buildings, it should, would, will ensure that dispersing of odour to acceptable levels. As a high level, we've got two, 22,000 litre tanks, one 10,000 litre tank. However, the projected need is only 18,000 litres per week. So there's plenty of, dare I say, fat in that system there being pumped once a week. The system itself, designed to Aussie standards, sealed hatches and whatnot. So that is being specifically chosen in direct response to the community concerns raised about that. So really, that's what I wanted to share with the community today in the panel, is that much like all of our other childcare centres, we spend a lot of time dealing with those key characteristics being, is there a community need? Is there allowance within the local, in the planning scheme zoning? Is there traffic impacts? Is there appropriate amenity and acoustic attenuation in the proposal? And lastly, does the design comfortably coexist with that surrounds in the zone? And on that basis, certainly it's our professional opinion and the opinion of our consulting team, that it does meet those criteria. And that's why we went ahead with the project, thank you.
Right, thank you Vu. We now move to our submitter presentation section of the hearing and we do have four speakers. So I'd firstly like to invite Nerida Atkinson to make her presentation, thank you Nerida.
It's hard to get good help. Okay, good afternoon, my name is Nerida Atkinson. My husband and I own Cara Lee Kindergarten and Early Years Learning, just located 80 metres from the proposed site. We have 27 employees at our family-run business and we pride ourselves on our commitment to early years learning and giving back to our local community. We are not a franchise, nor are we funded by seed money with investors keen on seeing what yield they can return on their investment. We're in early years education because we are passionate about education in the first five years of a child's life. Early childhood centres are governed under the Education, Queensland Education Regulatory Authority, which oversees the Education and Care National Services Law and Act. The proposed site is for 100 children. To meet government regulations, that is to be allowed to operate, the centre would need to have at least 23 full-time staff. The 17 full-time staff car parks proposed by the developer for this centre is grossly insufficient to service the amount of full-time staff the service must have regulation-wise. It does not meet the council's parking requirements. The developer has not supplied to the council the correct number of full-time employees. They will need to run the centre and meet regulation to operate. They are six car parks short. They have left out the director, the two IC, the educational leader, the two lunch float positions and programme cover positions, all government required. And then there is the kitchen staff. These full-time positions are all needed to be in attendance during the peak nine-hour period of the day. At least 23 staff per day, six car parks short of the council's parking requirements. There will also be morning open and evening closed staff, who will cross over with full-time staff to relieve them as this centre wants to be open for 13 hours a day. So we're now sitting at a minimum of 27 car parks being used daily. The 17 car parks does not meet Ipswich City Council's requirement of a car space per full-time staff member, six short. And to combat this lack of car park availability, staff will of course have to park on the roads. These roads which are already at breaking point and do not have safe shoulder parking available or clear line of sight and blind spots on Arthur Somerville's Road. This development is impact assessable and undercounting the amount of full-time staff and the parking needed to meet the parking code is most definitely a negative impact. With 23 full-time staff parking at the centre every day, you will not meet the Regulatory Authority's safe access to an emergency point. And that is the car park. Family cars and staff cars are considered a risk. Family cars and staff cars are considered a risk to the emergency point, and there must be safe and unencumbered access to it. The emergency point will not be able to provide line of sight to a hundred children, twenty-seven educators and family who may be in attendance. And this will be highlighted by the regulatory authority. It will result in a compliance of the national quality standard area two when they review all compulsory emergency evacuation procedures. Undercounting staff car parking and the need for correct parking allocations will have a huge negative impact on families, children and their safety, especially when an emergency occurs. This will also have the potential to impact negatively on the safety for families attending the school. Of course, these are issues, because we are trying to take a round peg and put it in a square hole. The developers are turning a residential block earmarked for a house into a commercial space with an underquoted car park and an occupancy that is too big for the rural setting it is proposed for. The demographic that live in Caralie have chosen to be in a rural setting, on large blocks with space to move. That is what they want for their children as well. Centres in rural settings don't have the minimum outdoor square metre because they are rural. C and K, one, two, three for kids, and our centre are well above the outdoor space requirements. The bare minimum is seven square metres per child, and Griffiths Group are right on the money with that for going buffer zones to get that through from the community code. They want to have an outdoor area for one hundred children at seven square metres per child, equaling just seven hundred and sixteen square metres. Our centre has an outdoor area for seventy-six children, which is one thousand three hundred and thirty metres square, just shy of double their space. If I did what Griffiths Group are proposing with their minimal square metre per child, I could fit one hundred and ninety children in my service. But it's not always about bottoms-on-seats and packing children in like sardines. This is a rural demographic, and the services in this area understand that. Caralie residents don't come here to have minimal space. To help support their bare minimum square metreage on their two small residential block, the developer has stated in their needs analysis on page four that it's okay. They'll use complimentary spaces, including Caralie State Schools grounds. That will be news to the school, they haven't been asked. If they were committed to engaging with the community, they would have known that the school doesn't even rent out its hall anymore because of issues with hirers. How will the school justify to parents that they are supplying complimentary spaces to a private childcare because the developer chose to use the bare minimum space allocation on their own property so they can have the greatest amount of children possible? This use of complimentary spaces is of course because even though their needs analysis with selective information states a need for forty-six to seventy-two places, they want to have a hundred. This hundred isn't needed now, and it certainly won't be with the hundred-and-nine-place centre in Karana Downs currently being built, and the second Play and Learn at Caralie, which is already in function, doesn't take it into account in the needs analysis. On page eleven of the needs analysis, IQ states that the proposal only takes into account long daycares due to families needing seven hours of care per day based on three days a week. The needs analysis did not submit the other options of care in our community, including C and K, which has long daycare options, and the seven family centres that are operating in our community. So too, it did not take into account the second childcare centre opened by Play and Learn, and that is in the main trade area. These are significant childcare options with long day options that are already in our area and make up these places needed that aren't captured in their selective data. I also draw your attention to the statement regarding supply on page twenty-one. Location IQ states discussions with operators from Caralie Kindergarten, one, two, three, four, and Play and Learn occurred, and we stated we had minimal vacancies with only Fridays available. This categorically did not happen. No discussions were had with operators. This report was submitted in March 2020. For those who need reminding, that was the beginning of the pandemic. Nationally, at the start of 2020, centres across the nation had children being ripped out of childcare by their families worried they would get COVID-19. If Location IQ had even attempted to call up under the disguise of pretending to be a parent to see if there was any vacancies, they would have been met with a resounding yes, because we were all scrambling to keep the enrolments we had and fill the vacancies with the mass exodus. No discussions took place with approved providers, because I certainly didn't have one, and none of my other approved providers did either. As you can see right now, this week on Childcare Finder, as mandated by the government for all childcare providers to declare their vacancies, our centres all have availability. Not one of us is full. So why do we need another centre on top of the newly approved and currently being built hundred-and-nine-place Karana Downs centre? And we also, it just happens to be outside of their selected main trade area for the needs analysis. Their needs analysis is incorrect, based on lies, discussions that never happened, and negating quality long daycare options within our community, all to service their own needs. As stated in the needs analysis on page twenty-seven, only six local jobs at the new childcare centre will be created to stay, six. So the other twenty-one, they will need to fully run that centre, will be external to our community. Well, my centre is filled with Caralie local communities members, and so is one, two, three for kids. And their jobs are now at risk, with another hundred-place centre on top of the hundred-and-nine-place Karana Downs and the second Play and Learn that's already in function. We will decrease in occupancy, there is no doubt about it. And for every four children we lose, a staff member will be lost, because we are ratio governed. That is a Caralie community member who will lose their job. And then we will scramble further to try and compete, and we'll have to drop our prices, which their needs analysis says is a good thing. Well, none of our centres are even at the Australian Government's base price for childcare. We don't even come close. So I guess we'll just have to go lower, which means cutting all of the extra options where we are able to do in our services right now. And that means our community suffers too. And that is a negative impact on our community. Finally, this development approval is impact and needs assessable. As shown in their needs analysis, there's falsities, it's selective, it's incorrect, and it's biased to their needs, not the community's. They have provided council with incorrect figures for full-time staffing to underquote their car parking needs so they can have more children in their occupancy and increase their profit margin, all to the detriment of our community and our safety. The impact of this development is negative to existing community businesses, our roads, our safety and our community. Allowing this proposal to go through with incorrect needs analysis and figures will also have a negative impact on upholding the codes of the Ipswich City Council that they are blatantly ignoring. Thank you.
We now move on to our second speaker, and if I can invite Kerrian Brown. Thank you Kerrian.
My name is Kerrian Brown, and my husband and I have lived in the Caralie community for twenty-eight years, eighteen in our present home at Twenty Lillian Street. We are the southern and only adjoining neighbour of the proposed development. This development requires material change of use and an impact assessment process. Such processes are in place because the type of use has the real potential to negatively impact our community. The material supplied by the developer in support of the application fails to meet good planning process. The developer has to show, not that he can just build the centre, but that there is an overwhelming need, and when built, there will be no negative impact. The developer's needs assessment has not demonstrated a need, and the development, should it be approved, will definitely have negative impacts. I will highlight parking and traffic issues, as well as the failure of the design to fit into the area. The developer has underestimated the parking requirements. The Ipswich City Council's parking code, one space per full-time staff and one space per eight children. The developer has supplied data for the full-time staff in the activity rooms only. The activity rooms require seventeen full-time staff. This is the only parking allowed for in their plans. They have avoided council's request for further plans, clarifying the other full-time staff that will be required. Nerida has spoken on this issue, explaining the full-time staff requirement by law this centre will need to operate. As she stated, a minimum of twenty-three full-time staff. The parking code will not be met. Street parking will be required. Full-time childcare staff from an existing centre parking on the street for the convenience of parents and safety of the children, making sure there is always centre parking available to parents. Arthur Somerville's Road allows for curbside parking. This parking does not inhibit the flow of traffic. Eileen Street and the residential streets Lillian and Winona do not safely allow for curbside parking. Therefore, staff and parents parking on these streets will most certainly be negatively The last sentence in the Q Traffic report, this site will have no reliance on curbside parking in the local area with all parking catered for on-site. Obviously, Q Traffic has not been supplied with the correct full-time staffing figures. Employees will be parking offsite. This is why the material change of use is impact assessable. The impact is real. There are existing problems with the volume of traffic using these roads. The fines that council and the police have handed out to date during these peak times attest to the current parking and traffic issues. The two-hundred-and-eighty-plus submissions received by council citing parking and traffic expressing the real concerns about the negative impacts on our community. Q Traffic's response, predicted to generate forty AM and thirty-five PM cars into the area during peak periods. The report states, these trips are unlikely to have any notable impact. The regional director of the Metropolitan Regional Transport and Main Roads at the Caralie Community Meeting on the tenth of June 2021 stated in front of the federal, state and local representatives, there was no upgrades to the infrastructure of Caralie roads in the foreseeable future. We, the community, who use these roads every day, know exactly how any increase in traffic will compound an already existing traffic problem. This project is impact assessable. The developer fails to prove that increased traffic generated by the proposed centre will not have an adverse impact on local residents and wider community. This development will not blend in to its surrounds, large lot residential, which is why we all move here. Look at the dense flora in the surrounds. The block the centre is proposed for was covered in similar vegetation, now cleared. It has lost the rural lifestyle feel and native animal habitats. The overall outcomes sought by council for community use are detailed in Code 2B, items two and three. Two, compatible with the physical characteristics of the site and its surrounds. And three, compatible with the desired character of the local area. The local area doesn't have buildings and car parks overwhelming their blocks with limited vegetation clinically positioned around boundaries. The developer fails to comply with these areas of the code. Other very valid points I would like to touch on are the poor needs analysis and the impacts of effluent disposal. For a material change of use to be justified, there has to be an overwhelming need for the development. The needs analysis report, which Nerida Atkinson has explained in more detail, overestimates need and underestimates capacity in existing facilities. The analysis of alternate sites or locations is particularly flawed, and council would be aware of how the Planning and Environmental Court views such poor quality assessments. The impact analysis dealing with effluent is also grossly flawed. MWA is one of the state's leading wastewater consultancies, yet the approach the developer has chosen to use is commonly referred to as, trust me, we have the solution. All MWA has been commissioned to supply is a letter in support of the trust me approach. In effect, the developer provides no or limited operational or design details, even though MWA are more than capable of doing such work, and asks that council approve the project. Only after approval will the developer then do the detailed technical assessment as a condition. If the proposal was to build a dwelling on the site, the council would require compliance and detailed design details before approval. This project is impact assessable for a very, very good reason. Details are needed before approval is given. Allowing the developer to run a trust me, we have a solution, but we cannot tell you argument is very poor planning. In summary, my major concerns about this development. Parking does not comply to the code with resulting overflow of staff parking onto adjoining streets. The developer has not adhered to the community use code. The material change of use is not justified because the needs analysis does not reflect overwhelming need. The effluent report, trust me, we have a solution, but we cannot tell you, argument is poor. The two-hundred-and-eighty-plus submissions received by council is one of the highest number of submissions ever received opposing an application. This, as well as a petition of over a thousand signatures clearly objecting to the poor location of this proposed childcare centre, indicates the community's concern about the negative impacts of the development. The Ipswich City Council developed the community use code to protect residents. The council needs to make sure council employees correctly apply these codes throughout the application process. The proposed development requires a material change of use and an impact assessment process. Such processes are in place because the type of use has the real potential to negatively impact our community. The material supplied by the developer in support of the application fails to meet good planning process. The developer has to show, not just that he can build the centre, but there is an overwhelming need, and when built, there will be no negative impacts on the local residents and wider community. This has clearly not been done, so this development should not be approved.
Thank you Kerrian. I'd now like to introduce Lachlan Brown, who I believe is speaking on behalf of Paul Brown. Thank you Lachlan.
Now, I did have a slide planned, but I really got it in a bit late unfortunately due to technical difficulties, so just disregard that part of the speech. Good afternoon. My name is Lachlan Brown, and I live at Twenty Lillian Street, Caralie, the neighbouring residence to this proposed development. residence to this proposed development. I will be speaking on behalf of my father, Paul Brown. As you would all know, this proposal requires a material change of use, and therefore an impact assessment must be completed as it is currently classified as a large lot residential property. It is my belief that this process has been put in place to protect residents like myself from the negative impacts that can follow such developments. In this presentation, I aim to bring to your attention the negative impacts this development will have on myself, my family and the surrounding residencies. Impacts that are in breach of the community use code and are being deliberately ignored by the developer. The current proposal allows for a 2.46 metre noise buffer along the southern boundary of my residence, which consists of vegetation and fencing. As this buffer ends, a play area catering to 44 children from two years of age and older begins. As outlined by the Ipswich City Council's Development Manager in the extract that unfortunately I don't have here to show you, the community use code states landscape buffers of a minimum width of 10 metres are to be provided to the side and rear boundaries where the site abuts land in a residential zone. The developer has blatantly disregarded this. The current development proposal states that between their opening time of 6am until their closing time of 7pm, there will be children occupying the outdoor play areas, approximately 50% of the 13 hours they operate in. This estimates that there will be excessive noise being generated by these children for approximately six and a half hours in a day. To my knowledge, there have been no regulations mentioned that would govern the intervals that this excessive noise would occur in, and I am therefore concerned that it will occur during times of day that will disrupt my family and the families of the surrounding residencies negatively. The most recent noise impact assessment that has been submitted by the developer clearly states that the relevant noise that is currently heard in our locality between 6am and 7am is 62 decibels. It also states that the relevant sound levels of these outdoor play areas will range from 80 decibels to 93.4 decibels, depending on the age and number of children in the play areas. That is an approximate difference in sound of 31.4 decibels, which I believe is an unacceptable level and hasn't been presented properly. Due to the impacts that I have outlined and impacts that everybody else has outlined in their presentations, both in speeches and objection letters, I believe that this development proposal is not in the best interests of the community, and it should therefore be refused. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lachlan. Our final speaker now for the submitted presentation is Brenda Vallally. Come forward, Brenda. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Vallally, and my husband Justin and I have resided at 10 Lillian Street, Caralie, for 17 years raising our family. Our property is three doors down from the proposed childcare development and on the southern side, and is two up from the Caralie kindergarten. Our property has dual access from Lillian Street to Arthur Somerville's Road, with the house positioned on the block closest to Arthur Somerville's Road. When we purchased our home, we were able to make an informed decision to buy knowing we were buying near a school and there was an existing childcare centre two doors down. And we were satisfied that the vacant block of land on the corner of Arthur Somerville's Road and Elaine Street was a rural residential block and would one day have a house built on it. We have many concerns this development will negatively impact ourselves and the community. Today, I will speak of a few of these concerns. Regarding waste management. The developer has proposed childcare centre has indicated that waste trucks servicing the centre will enter the car park in a forward motion from Elaine Street, manoeuvring within the car park so as to exit also in a forward motion. The response to council's request for further information, the developer has provided very limited operational or design details, stating they will be submitted in a sewerage management plan to council prior to commencement of use. I intend to demonstrate that the commercial-sized waste tank in this residential area will impact on residents, no matter what system is used, and that truck collection procedures and controls are of little consequence. A reliance on contractors to adhere to work within council and industry regulations, or as specifically instructed by their own clients, is a constant and ongoing battle with operators choosing times and processes convenient to themselves. Waste trucks servicing Caralie State School are required to back into the pool car park, which is considerably a larger space than what is being proposed in this development. However, this is very rarely to never happens, with drivers choosing for convenience to pull up on the footpath and pump over the fence, which such practice has caused ongoing damage to the school fence and surrounds, as you can see on this line. Our back fence is opposite the Caralie State School pool and the car park, which is where the school effluent tanks are located. When these tanks are being pumped, the noise and smell generated is grotesque and can be heard and smelt from inside our home, and when standing in the front of our property in Lillian Street some 80 metres away. Over the past 17 years, these tanks have been pumped out at varying times, and many complaints have been made. There have been occasions when we were woken in the very early hours of the morning, anywhere from 2am, by the deafening sound of an idling truck and its pump. Our southern neighbours Christine and Ian Mackenzie have resided in their home for 22 years and are both here today, and have given me permission to table their experiences with you, as their driveway is directly opposite these tanks, and they are often home when these tanks are pumped. In the majority of circumstances, the waste truck drives up onto the footpath, stops on the grass verge with engines idling while pumping out the tanks, which is on average half an hour. It is not unusual for these two trucks to be on-site at the same time, or two trucks servicing on the same day at different times at the contractor's discretion. It is also not uncommon for trucks to arrive outside the 12pm scheduled time, arriving at various times during the day, including between 2.30 and 3pm, which of course is peak time for school pickup, and which is not only an inconvenience, but is also extremely hazardous environment as the truck obscures driveways and pedestrian hazard blocking the footpath. It is also not uncommon on occasions, especially in summer, for the operator to remain in the air-conditioned truck as the tanks are pumped. It would be reasonable assumption to expect that even though the developer states in his response to council that truck engines would be turned off during transfer, the reality, as per our own experience, would suggest otherwise. When the waste collection is finished, the driver on occasions does a U-turn in front of the Mackenzie's house, driving up over the footpath and their driveway, which has caused ongoing damage. My point in raising this issue today has been our experiences collectively over the past 22 years, that these service providers manage their schedules to suit their own workloads and take their own liberties in times convenient to them to pump out the effluent tanks, completely ignoring regulations and showing absolutely no regard to neighbouring residents or their client. The developer cannot guarantee anything different when servicing this proposed childcare centre. If a house was to be built on this block, there would be no need to have a regular waste truck coming to pump tanks, as sewerage would be treated on-site, as is the case in all surrounding homes. By allowing a material change of use and building a childcare centre which will use a commercial-sized effluent tank, you will be inflicting ongoing negative impacts on the surrounding residents and community. Buffers. Division 12 Community Use Code states that landscape buffers of a minimum width of 10 metres are provided to the side and rear boundaries where the site abuts land in residential zones. The developer proposes 2.46 metres of landscaping buffer within a two-metre timber fence. Christine and Ian Mackenzie live next door to childcare centre in Caralie, where they've lived for 22 years, and have witnessed the vegetation buffer between the childcare centre and their boundary diminish from over six metres when they first bought their property, to be completely non-existent with children now playing right up to the timber fence. The only landscape buffer separating the outdoor play areas these days is what Mr. and Mrs. Mackenzie have had to plant themselves on their side of the fence. Acknowledging that the outdoor play areas at Caralie kindergarten is significantly larger than the proposed childcare centre area. Whilst Mr. Mackenzie was able to create a buffer by landscaping her side of the boundary fence, landscaping is not an option for the southern neighbours of this proposed childcare centre, as the boundary fence abuts their driveway, leaving their bedrooms and entertainments areas in the line of fire. The reality is plants die, and they will either not be replaced or replaced with smaller plants that will take years to be of size to make any real difference in reducing noise. My property is some 76 metres away from the Caralie kindergarten, and I can still clearly hear outdoor play noise that penetrates through two timber fences, three landscape buffers, and is an example of how far noise can actually travel. In addition, Mrs. Mackenzie states that whilst they have become accustomed to children laughing, playing and squealing, she worries that the time may come for them to downsize and sell their property, that prospective buyers will be deterred by outdoor noise. The parking code has been detailed and addressed by Nerida and street parking by Kerrian. The photos on this slide are the three side streets that surround the proposed childcare centre. Elaine, Lillian, which is my street, and Winona, demonstrating that they are already at capacity. The next slide is Arthur Somerville's Road, and clearly shows staff from other childcare centres utilising the street for parking. This is common practice in other centres that we have also spoken to, and is done for convenience of parents and caregivers accessing car parks on-site. A local real estate agent advises us those properties in such close proximity to childcare centre would have a reduced buyer's market, and selling would have to be below the market value to make it appealing to a potential buyer. In a case study they gave to us, at the time in selling a property in Solander Court, Karana Downs, which abuts onto a childcare centre, houses in the area were selling in a timeframe of between 28 and 42 days. This property took 153 days to sell, with the general consensus being that the noise from the childcare centre deterred buyers. In closing, this application requires a material change of use. It's impact assessable. The developer has not addressed the real impact this proposed development will have to residents and the Caralie community, and therefore this application should not be approved. Fact, operating and servicing a commercial vehicle in a rural residential area will have adverse impacts on surrounding residents and the extended community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Brenda. So that concludes all of the formal presentations as part of the public hearing this afternoon. I would really like to extend our thanks to those who have made a presentation this afternoon, particularly the members of the public who have taken on council's invitation to come and address the panel this afternoon. Particularly commend you for the quality of the presentations, both from the applicant and from the submitters, and the delivery in which you've addressed your issues in a clear and really succinct and concise way. So where to from here? Just so that you are aware, that part of the panel's role is now to formulate its views and determine whether the panel agrees with the officer recommendation, agrees with the officer recommendation subject to change, or inclusions to additional matters or reasons for refusal, or that the panel disagrees with the officer recommendation. These are all outlined in the formal public terms of reference for the panel. Importantly, the panel is making its recommendation, and it must have regard to the application material, the planning scheme, relevant legislation, properly made submissions. Ultimately, it is our role to ensure that the development decisions are consistent with relevant legislation and planning objectives. Our recommendation will be finalised within a report that will go back to council. It's important to note that the panel does not hold delegation to make the decision on the application. This application will ultimately be presented to the council for decision. On behalf of the panel, I do thank you all for your time and your attendance this afternoon. The public hearing is a very important component of our independent decision review panel process. We certainly appreciate all of the time that has been taken, both in terms of attendance and with the presentation, your willingness to share your views and to address the panel this afternoon. This does draw to a close today's public hearing, and thank you for your attendance.